You are watching Access Lapeur County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 2nd, 2022 meeting of the Michigan City Historic Preservation Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslapourcounty.org.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order and I personally want to thank each and every one of you for coming because this is not one of our nights that we're supposed to meet. I know everybody keeps their four Mondays and I was quite shocked when we were asked to come to this meeting. And part of it, I think, is because we have a really nice guy in charge that tries to please people and that's okay, but sometimes you can't please everybody. That's just my own opinion. I was quite shocked when we were asked and I really appreciate because like I said, I know he's running late. She just had a procedure today and two people could not come because they had other commitments.
I second that opinion. Oh, we're not being a get out.
My kid is in car. But I'm not.
Is he in the car? Well, I hope with her husband.
Yeah.
Did he do window crack or something?
He's probably losing it.
And I apologize, I saw you guys last time. I had such a bad cough and with nowadays with COVID and everybody being, I didn't have it, but just it's better just to stay away and.
Well, we appreciate it. We're all kind of.
There was no symptoms, no fever, but I just figured, you know what, I don't want to be sitting here the whole time like.
Well, you get to enjoy the second verse here tonight.
That's right, yeah.
Right, right.
Well, they're not even in the car. His brother picking them up. They went crazy.
They got lucky.
They drove him crazy.
Well, that's good.
Take him to the flower shop, give him a broom.
There you go. And everybody's got an agenda. Do you need to look at one? Okay. And pretty much we got everything again that we already had gone through. And what I find interesting is the shingles on and the thing up on the roof are no longer up there. So isn't that anyway.
But they were.
Yeah. Heard pictures better than mine. And then I think, I don't know if everybody got it, but she sent pictures of a historical house in South Bend. Mine came out kind of brownish pink. Hers were beautiful. They were more clear like this, but this is what we are recommending to them was the slate look and this is what they're proposing. Cheaper stuff than what I have on asphalt shingles.
These are pretty realistic. They vary a lot, but that particular brand was one of them that I listed last week as being a good choice.
Right. And there's, and the house has it. I mean, it looks very nice whoever did it. And what I thought, another thing that was interesting, this is my own personal opinion, they're based out of South Bend. They know about Indiana landmarks. So I'm thinking that's kind of like another check market.
I think they're online here now.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call very quickly.
Oh, neat. Joyce Dalton.
Present.
Dan Grandsky.
Grant Quest here.
Grant Quest, I'm getting it right one day. Dwayne Hurt.
Here.
John Hendricks.
Here.
Roger.
Rochez is not here.
Amy Bowman.
Here.
Jonas Zimmerman.
Here.
Greg.
He's not here tonight either.
Deb Parcell.
Here.
And Kyle's absent, but I'm here. Sylvia Collins.
Write her name down. Sylvia is assistant to Kyle for those of you that don't.
I'm assistant to Skyler.
Oh, Skyler, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. And the only thing on our agenda tonight is to talk about the roof replacement at 312 East 8th Street. And I understand we're being joined on Zoom. So I see there's two names up here, Nick and Gregory.
Yes, all right. Nick, when I was here and it looks like Greg Kill as well.
Yes, commission members, Greg Kill with Kill Architecture and Planning.
You had some questions for us?
Nick, do you want to say a few initial words and then I can follow?
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming together at short notice. We are currently embarking on a, the project that was much larger than we originally thought on 312 East 8th. However, I can say with great confidence and excitement that I think it's going to look beautiful when we're done and where I think we're getting close to the finish line. The roof is the last kind of major piece that we need to get completed. And what we're hoping to discuss tonight is the possibility of an alternate shingle for the roof based on kind of the current labor and supply chain market that we're in. And the fact that the insulation for the roof is now going to be on the outside under the shingle. So what we're hoping to do is I wanted Greg to kind of give a few words around kind of the architectural integrity of it. Can probably answer any questions you might have when it comes to the nuts and bolts of how to be executed. So Greg, if you want to go ahead and jump in, I think Abraham's going to be joining us as well at some point if there's any questions about the roof.
Okay. Commission members, Greg Kill with Kill Architecture. One thing that I do need to note is that originally we were brought in as a consultant to look at a limited scope. The original architect of record on the project was out of Portage and we worked with Nick and his other partner, Tim Enright, on the Uptown Center project, which I think had come out of the commission. And in this case, our relationship with him was, as they got into the project, there were a few areas of issues, one of which the roof condition was initially a structural endanger. So I was not brought in as the architect of record for the original design of the rehab two apartments. However, when we were asked to look at it, we were asked to, hey, is there any recommendations on a structural engineer because the roof had some failure and in terms of the roofer that was working on it, could that be replaced with very usual depth conditions? Since the interior of the space, they chose to expose that. I also questioned the insulation and in this case, the financial involvement was related to the drainage in our structural engineering. Then when the issue relative to replacement came into effect, that was upside of our group. We also understand that the sequence of where we were led to where we're at now would not have been something that, you know, we would have recommended. Of course, we would have recommended anything we brought in front of the commission if there was an exterior change. And so I just wanted to make sure that that responsibility was something that wasn't part of our initial agreement with our client Nick. But knowing where we're at, I can provide some thoughts and recommendations based upon our experience as preservation architects. One of the things that we know is that standards apply relative to the district and we understand the district calls for replacement in liking kind. And when not possible to repair, replacement in alternate materials are allowed, but with approval of the Preservation Commission. I know that in the case of the fact that the roof was removed prior to getting an approval puts our client in a very difficult position. It also puts, I acknowledge it puts the Preservation Commission in a very difficult position. Setting precedent outside of the bounds of what they would, the commission would normally consider in from a timing standpoint is more than awkward. So I appreciate your meeting today and to consider this alternate material. When we look at the roof that's there, one of the issues that we know is slate does not last forever. I think Deb had noted that the standards call for options on alternate materials when more than 50% of the material has failed. The fact that the roof was removed before we had a chance to see whether that was the case, I can't cite that. But Nick, can you talk a little bit about whether there was leaks within the building and the extent of the leaks and whether the shingles were deteriorating and sliding off the roof? I know there's an internal, was an internal gutter that was part of that system. So if slates were sliding off, that may have been maintained within the carpet of the roof?
Oh, yeah. The roof was heavily damaged and so there was damaged shingles. There was water coming in only in the up to upstairs units. Nothing made its way down to the bottom floor units. I think it's a function of the whole building being concrete. But yeah, there was water damage. And then what happened was is there was damage around the internal gutter system. So we're actually still at this point getting some water through there. So we need to shut off that internal gutter system because the internal pipes are corroded. So there's no way to maintain or fix that current system. And I think Abraham, the roofer will be jumping on here in a couple of minutes. But yeah, the original intention, we had to completely remove the slate. It was damaged.
So one thing that we would ask for consideration by the commission is under that scenario is alternate materials be considered. I know that the option would be, is there, you know, an acceptable option with an asphalt roof that has a similar color and texture versus the synthetic slate options? We know that material supply chain issues have entered in. I think Abraham was going to speak to that. I can't speak to some of those issues. We also know that on past projects that we've had other commissions, now again, that's not precedent in this case, it's just stating that when the roofs are not as visible, we've had other commissions or the state sort of preservation office and to start tax credits through the National Park Service have accepted asphalt shingles that have the scale and color and texture that's similar to slate. We know it's not comparable to the simulated slate roofs that are on the market in the G or the Echo Star, some of the others that we have specified for other projects. I think that the fact that the roof is a hip roof and the angle of the roof and the slope from the public way is such that it's not as dominant of a feature than if it were a more steeply pitched roof would be something I would ask the commission's consideration in approval of change to an asphalt shingle roof if possible.
My question would be to Nick is if this was so important and so urgent, why would you not attend our last meeting when we had a lot of questions and discussion?
My apologies. I didn't realize that it was taking place. I've been traveling for work a lot and then my four kids under seven are running me ragged. I didn't realize it was happening and it was a mystery on my calendar. So that's a very valid question and my apologies for missing it.
I have a question, few questions on behalf of the city and Kyle. My question is what prevented you guys from applying for our ACOA? And if we hadn't perhaps stumbled onto the fact that they were removed, would you have informed us or followed the proper procedure?
I'm sorry, the, what's the ACOA?
The COA is the permit application that should have been applied for.
Certificate of Appropriateness Application is what it's called. So it was in the beginning, like year and a half ago, two years ago, whenever this project started, you filled one out and that's when we looked at the windows and masonry repairs that that one was for. And then after they did discover this, they had you fill out a form. It has your signature on it anyway. I don't know who filled it out, but somebody did for this roof. That was a retroactive application. So that's what she's talking about.
Okay. And I'm sorry, what was the question again?
If we wouldn't have stumbled onto the fact that you removed the slate, would you have informed the preservation, the city or anyone? That is our concern.
Yes, absolutely. I, where the miscommunication took place is when we did the last meeting, I was under the impression that it was approved to get a similar look to it. And I thought that the asphalt singles, because regardless of what we chose, that whole roof had to come down because of the damage across basically the entire, I don't know if it was the south or west end of it. So we would have had to pull that off regardless. Where it went arise, we did not realize that we were required to put slate back up on it or even a synthetic slate. So I thought it was under the impression that if it was a gray matching and it looked similar, given the height off the street, that it would have been okay. But yeah, we absolutely, I thought it was all covered under the last one.
Well, seeing.
The last meeting.
Yeah. Well, with this being a house and a historic district, anything removed from the existing structure needed to be, have been approved by the Historic Preservation. It can be a crumb on the wall, but we just needed to be informed of it. And it also has to come before them, before the fact and not after the fact, which is why the decision was made previously in the previous meeting.
Okay, I understand.
And I also respect the fact that the process, you know, we have to respect the process that, you know, the fact that the roof was removed without coming in front of the commission, it definitely puts a commission in a difficult position to act on anything but, you know, a strict adherence of the standards. But on behalf of my client, the situation was such where he understood that the slate was damaged to the point that it needed to be replaced. It wasn't an intentional end around that he was trying to do. He thought that he was compliant. And I also understand that the roofer had, and I know Abraham's not on the call, but when I talked to him this past week, I understood that he was pulling, planning to pull permit and his manager was sick and his crews were out in the field and they did it before the actual permit was pulled. And I know that again, that's out of sequence, that's another situation that would have flagged by the building department that, oh, you're a district, you can't touch that roof without an approved COA if it's anything but repair in liking kind. So I want to acknowledge that, you know, respect the process. On behalf of our client, things happen. It's more than unfortunate, but we're asking for consideration of replacement with alternate material as proposed based on the conditions that we're up.
I have another question. Were the material that you're proposing to put on there already on the roof before?
No.
Was it on the roof at any point? At any point between now and you, at any point before today, was it on the roof?
The new material that we're proposing replace the roof with?
Yes.
No, I'm not, I'm not aware. Do they think the roof was changed somewhere around 1915?
No, no.
The original.
No, I'm referring to the material, what the work had, so, okay.
For the recent repair.
The recent repair, there were already these gray shingles on there. Am I correct? On half of the building.
They were stacked up on top.
Nick, I can't answer that. I know whether that's the case. I guess I'm not sure.
Based on a picture, do you?
In other words, did the roofer start to put on the new?
No, they didn't start to put them on. They had them on the roof.
No, they didn't put any shingles on.
They had them, sir, they had them on the roof. We have a picture of them where they put the shingles up on the roof before anything was approved. This was even before our meeting last Monday. So now they're down. I have no idea where they're at, but they're down off the roof. And this isn't the, going to miss Gregory, this is not the first red flag with this project. Whoever he had as contractors many times did the job without applying for the permit first.
Which this whole, I'm sorry, hold on a second. Abraham is trying to get in the Zoom meeting. It's, it can, let me see, please. Sorry, hold on one second. I can forward the link to him. Yeah, let me see there if he can pick up. Hold on. He was trying to call. I don't know if he's in the lobby.
Well, he may be in the lobby, but we wouldn't be able to let him in currently because of the fact that we have a meeting right after this. We kind of are interfering with a regularly scheduled meeting in order for us to have this meeting.
We have 10 minutes left.
Why are you proposing the alternate material and not accepting the original material that was approved last meeting? Hello?
Nick, do you want to speak to that? Hello, Nick?
Is he on mute trying to reach Abraham?
I think he may be doing that just because Abraham was going to speak to availability of product relative to often.
Sorry, I think he was trying to get in. I don't know if he's.
Okay. Go ahead.
We understand that.
In the waiting room.
He rang me.
But I'm sorry, man, if you could repeat your question, there was, I know you were asking me a question. I mean, you get distracted.
We understand that the roof is covered or entitled by building permit to be covered, sealed, protected. So why are you now asking for an alternate material other than the one that was approved last time?
No, yeah. So what ended up happening is when we first embarked on this roof, we went through four different roofers who went up there and basically said that it was next to impossible to even fix. It was too big of a job for them. So we literally ran through three local R and L. We didn't run out of time. We brought out all of these local guys to look at it. When we needed the structural drawing done, that's when we called Greg. Greg came in, saw it and advised on it. Greg was the one that found us the roofer out of South Bend, who obviously has done work with Greg in the past, you know, came highly recommended. And it was at this point where we were so far beyond what I thought, you know, I thought we were originally approved and that was on me for not realizing that we had to go back through the approval process. And we were so nervous to try and get it done before winter because if we went through another winter with it, the interior's been painted and updated, it would have, it would have really damaged the inside of the building with how the shingles were currently on. So that's why we, by no means were we trying to skirt, this roof has been kind of the bane of my existence, just finding a contractor for like the last, you know, eight to 10 months. And so we finally, somebody's found somebody that could do it, that was available and given the supply chain issues with the materials, we were, I was under the impression again, that was the miscommunication on my end, that if it was a similar shade and look as the shingle, we could put it on. So if any shingles were put on, my apologies, we stopped immediately once Deb, not Deb, Sue came by. I've known Sue on other stuff and we stopped and removed or whatever it was. And that's why we've been going through the process to try and get this approved through you because winter is coming and it was getting damaged every time it rained. It was coming through the slate.
Okay, but Nick, Nick, Nick.
It was just a lot of, I guess, anxiety for us.
Nick, that's not the question. We understand that the roof is now or can be protected with sheeting, with plastic, with some kind of material tarping to protect it from any water damage. So why are you now asking for an alternate material instead of the one that was approved last week that's available and apparently out of South Bend and available from that way?
No, oh, so what we're, what we want to put on is the asphalt, the shingle.
But why, what's wrong with the original one that was approved?
The slate?
Yes.
We can't, we can't get it. There's, there's, there's no slate with everything that's happened from a construction standpoint, the lead time to get that is going to be in the like February or March. And so that we, I don't even know if it's that long. I have to ask Abraham how long out it is. But there was no way with the inventory available in the market that we could even get that, that type of roofing material.
Okay, we didn't say slate. We understand that.
Or the synthetic slate is all.
Right.
Yeah. So I, after talking with Abraham, he said that we're going to have to leave it exposed through the winter.
Have you, have you all checked with other individuals in the surrounding area other than South Bend?
Check with them regarding what?
The synthetic slate, the material.
No, he's a roofing contractor. So he goes out, the square footage of that roof is very large. It's a very large roof. And so to even get the volume, even cut, so let's just say there is synthetic slate available for a, you know, a single family residential home, that roof, the square footage is massive. So the inventory backup, to even get that on the premise, to even protect the roof, the lead time is through the roof. No pun intended.
We, we understand the complications behind it. I think our concern is the lack of protocol and the decision was made last week and it's up to the commission whether they want to revote on that. So I'll let them take over and we'll move forward with whatever decision that the commission makes.
Does anyone have any questions?
Could you install synthetic slate over the top of asphalt shingles? Like if you put these, if you put this on, can you come back and put it over the top of that?
It has to be directly on the decking, I would imagine.
Couldn't afford it anyway.
That would, that would be our recommendation, that the two, two layers of roof are going to reduce the warranty and undermine the potential warranty of especially differential roof systems.
And Kyle had left a remark about that as well. Kyle said to remind the board that the guidelines that once we approve an asphalt roofing, that it must stay an asphalt roofing. So if we approve it, them coming back will not exist. So he wanted you guys to be aware of, once it's approved, that that's what it will have to be in the future.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yep, do you? You know, urgency was definitely something that I was looking at initially because I hate to see a roof exposed in bad weather if we had to wait a long time. And one thing, we don't know definitively how long a wait it'll be for the correct material. So that's, that's one thing that makes it really difficult to make a decision differently. But since I have found out that this project is approved to have the roof covered with anything temporarily that will keep the weather out, the urgent, the urgency just isn't there that I was seeing initially. It can be covered up and it can wait. And I, I know it's hard to roof in February or whatever, but you know, if you get a week, if you get everything on there, I mean, it's already got the decking, the insulation, you can put up drip edge, you could deal with the gutters, you could temporarily install the ridge cap if you needed to. Whatever, whatever it takes, really all you'd be waiting on is that final layer of shingles. I mean, they're not all that keeps the water out. It's everything beneath it. So I, the urgency that I had perceived initially, once I found out it's able to be covered with whatever to keep the weather out, I just don't quite sense the urgency that I once was.
Well, I would like if Abraham could, he says he can see that that, what he has down now, the watertight seal he's on, he is not confident that that's going to go through winter exposed. That's why, I'm sorry if the panic in my voice is elevating, but that, that was a stop wash. He says every time we're in there, it's, so he's in there toddling to speak. Is there a way to get Abraham on? I think, is there somebody controlling that? I think, is there somebody controlling it?
We don't, the meeting is ending in a few minutes, in less than two minutes, we only had a half an hour available.
There are tarts available and that's exactly what was just said. Yes, I understand what your roofer's saying, I also talked to two roofer's this week. And yes, it can be covered in order for it to be done properly as it was recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission.
And this is a significant historic property in the community that we're very much concerned about protecting the appearance, the historic appearance of the, of the building. And I would have expected a lot more detail and a lot more evidence and presentation regarding the availability or supply chain issue, but without any of that, it's, it's hard to consider anything else.
In the waiting room, he's trying to get logged in, I know.
Well, we started at six o'clock.
Yeah, we started at six, we're sorry. Are you ready for a vote?
Okay, you don't, you don't have to vote because you already have, there's no new COA application. So only if you wanna change something and, you know, it's up to you, they're, they're asking for the architectural shingles and certainly you couldn't do this without assessing a fine or something beyond that if you, if you chose to do that. But like, like Kyle said, if you choose to do this, this is what it is.
No.
It seems the general consensus is to make no changes to our decision last meeting.
And if you want to bring accurate and final information on what you found out about the slate, we would appreciate that. And then we do meet on the fourth Monday of the month.
Every month, fourth Monday of every month.
And on the materials that you receive, it also tells you when you have to have the information to us so that we can review it before our meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.